I'll call the committee of the whole meeting. And I would like to inform the public that we did hold an executive session at 6:30 this evening. Mrs. Laeger, let me call the board, please. Mrs. Eller?
Here.
Mrs. Houser?
Here.
Mrs. Kocar? Dr. Lachman?
Here.
Dr. Mautha?
Here.
Mr. Music?
Here.
Mrs. Palmer?
Here.
Mrs. May?
Here.
Thank you. Typically, we don't have a hearing of visitors in the committee to hold a meeting, but we are voting on several resolutions this evening if you have a copy of an agenda. And when we vote on resolutions, we'd like to give the public a chance to have any say or address the board on any of those issues. So if you take a look at your agenda and you see that we are voting on resolutions 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, and 63. So if anyone would like to address the board on those issues, would you please rise and come to the podium and give us your name? Okay, thank you. And we'll next go to the solicitors. Report, Mr. Naples.
I'd like to read a resolution for you, number 56, on employee discipline matter, number one of the 2012-2013 school year. And I recommend that you move on to the following resolution. The result that after a full investigation was recorded on due process rights, the Board of School Directors directs the solicitor and appropriate administrators to implement the recommendation of the solicitor and administrators with respect to employee discipline matter number 01 of the 2012-2013 school year.
I will move for that resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Eller.
You should probably, after the board's discussion, actually do it.
Okay. Okay, any discussion from board members? Questions? I will open up the floor again then to the public because that resolution was not actually stated on the agenda. So if anyone would like to address the board on that resolution read by Mr. Naples, please rise. No? No further discussion by board members? Do I need a roll call?
Yes.
Yes. We have a roll call, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Houser?
Yes.
Dr. Lachman?
Yes.
Dr. Mautha?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. May? Yes. That passes your hand, Leslie. Thank you.
And the next resolution that is on the agenda, I'd like to move to address next week, please.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Naples. Legislative report, Dr. Lachman. Your report, thank you. Education and planning, we're so happy you welcomed the students back. Nice addition to our meeting. And I'll turn it over to you for your report, Blake Blair and Kevin.
Good evening, everybody. Over the summer, Mr. Ilcassio met with a group of senior student leaders to discuss the way that the school can get that sense of family back for the upcoming school year. With the help of the administration and the student council, we were able to come up with a way to do this in a sort of icebreaker activity with the students. On the first day during the first three periods, the homerooms were split up into groups. One senior homeroom, one junior homeroom, and one sophomore homeroom. The first activity they did was that they each blew up a balloon, wrote their name on it in an adjective to describe them, just as a way to get to know each other before the activity actually started. Then the next part was that they would build a balloon tower with the given materials, which was a set of balloons and a roll of mass in it. The highest tower after a set period of time would be the winner. And the winners were given a free pass for a drug in the student store. It was pretty competitive, and after the time limit, the winners were chosen. And then proceeded the upperclassmen guided tours, which the juniors and seniors who are familiar with the building, each took a sophomore from their group and showed them around more one-on-one what their schedule was than what they had had orientation with the group tour. The reaction from the teachers was that it was a great way for people to mingle. They really appreciated getting the students to know each other on the first day so that they were more comfortable as well. And the students enjoyed meeting new people, kind of got them out of their comfort zone. From my perspective, as a student council member that helped facilitate the activity, I could really see the team building that the activity brought. And for me, I consider it a success, as many of the faculty and students would consider as well. I hope to see that the student council will be doing something like this in future years. And now I'd like to turn it over to Blair, who has reported on some of the amendments.
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to formally introduce myself to start because I was unable to come to the board meeting last year. So like Kevin said, I'm Blair Barnhart, and I will be the other school board representative. Just to speak on upcoming events, the Senior High is holding a pep rally this Friday with 14. I just feel it's very appropriate this Friday being that the game that evening is our senior night. So we're just going to get everyone pumped up for the game and hopefully a good turnout in the den. Moving on, we have, starting next week, homecoming committee meeting through the student council just to set the themes and also to go on homecoming court. And the weekend of homecoming is already selected and is in place. On October the 12th will be the homecoming game. And then that following Saturday, the 13th, will be the dance. Moving on to athletics, just a minor thing. The two girls from the varsity girls tennis team will be going to section singles this Thursday and Friday. The two girls are going to be Nikki Pussi and Anna Ware. So we're very excited for them, cheering them on this Thursday and Friday. And the last thing on the list, I know it's the first week of school, so not a lot is going on at the elementary schools, but they are holding the book fair and also open houses this week following into next week. So thank you all for this.
Thank you both for your report. Are there any questions for the students this evening?
I'm tired of talking. I'm tired.
They're about a foot or so from the ceiling. They're hardly maneuver back into the commentary.
Okay, thank you very much. There's an enrollment report in your packet, item number one, from Dr. Tepper. Do you have any comment, Dr. Tepper, at all?
No, I guess that behind the enrollment report is also the elementary class size per class size. So they seem to be stable life.
Okay, so you think we're going to be okay?
Yes.
Educational programs, Dr. Brenner?
We have, uh... We have had one year of ECAD Academy under our belts. And we're starting our second year with ECAD. And one of the things that we wanted to do was come back to the board and give an overall trend report in regard to cyber charter schools and our enrollment out of district, inside charter schools, and the impact that ECAD Academy has had in that area. And so I think the first graph that you'll see is a trend graph from 2008, 2009 through 2012, 2013. If you see in 2008, '09, you saw 68 students. Jumped to 92, hit it, hit it, hit it, the peak in 100 students in '10 and '11. There were times during that school year that we actually exceeded 100, but at the end, end of the year, we ended up, you know, being built for 100 students. Last year, that number dropped to 80 students. And at this point, right now, we are 58 students enrolled in cyber charter schools outside of the regular school district. So as you can see, that definitely is a positive trend that we want to see continue moving in that direction. If you take a look at the impact, we started out, over time, when you think about this in terms of bills of taxes and the payments that go into the overall tuition costs of the lot of cyber charter schools. And in '07, '08, it was $448,451. It jumped up to 527, 635 in '09 with the peak at 772, 583. In '09, '10, in '10, '11, it dropped to 722, 839. Dropped again in 2011, '12 to 661,630. And our projected cost based upon 60 students, we use that good revenue fluctuation may occur for '12, '13, that being $490,000. And so you can see that there's been an impact on that tuition payment outgoing to cyber charters. The next piece is important to note, and you can see some things that have happened. Our special aid costs in terms of tuition for that, which is what we pay. We have a special education student goes to cyber charter. They do not get the rate of tuition for a regular education student. They get the rate of tuition for a special education student. You can see that ranged over that time from the first year, $13,149, to around $14,000. And now this year, we're down to $13,087. Whereas the tuition for a regular education student has been around '08, '09. That's established by the state. They establish your tuition. '09 was $7,055, then went to $7,482. And in '10, '11, it went to $7,038. It jumped in '11, '12, and I think selling that maybe from the stimulus money, it was $7,511. And then this year, again, just informed me yesterday that our tuition rate will be $7,141. And so the reason that's so important, jumps like last year of, you know, over $400 per student, when you multiply that out, has an impact on that tuition payment that goes out to the cyber charters. If you take a look at ECAD Academy and blended schools, over time, our costs for that program include professional development platform costs, whether it's MOO or Blackboard, the cost for the teachers that we pay for providing service, all of that is included in here. And so if you take a look, in '07, '08, we had $43,321. '09 rose to $75,854, dropped to $69,967. '10, '11 was around $50,862. One of the things that was happening, as you remember, we had Blackboard, and we could only service a limited number of students. We had to buy licensing, and it created a situation where it limited our ability to expand our program, which led to a decision, for a lot of reasons, to move to ECAD Academy. And however, the first year implementation and a drastic increase in students, a large number of students taking those courses, both on a part-time and full-time basis, created a situation where program cost rose. But you can see the result previously when you look at our overall outgoing tuition costs. And so last year rose to $102,500. Now, there are some costs that will not be incurred because that initial implementation is over and that phase of it. So that will project at this point, ECAD Academy will be around $89,000. So what's it all mean in terms of our outgoing costs to cyber charter, cyber education, both internal and external? If you take a look at the trend, what has happened over time, including regular true costs for our program and our outgoing tuition, we went from $491, 772 to $603, 489, to '09, '10 at the height of $842,570 cost. And then dropped to 778, $701, then 764, 138, and projected in '12, '13, $579,000. So I have to say that the work, your commitment to the program, as well as the work of the administrators involved, Robin and Jeff and Matt Schitt, as well as our teaching staff who really embraced this and sold this and have been a bastards for the program, have attributed a lot to the success of this program. And so, one, we believe through providing better services to students, we're servicing far more students than just those students that are there full-time, but also the students that have that tendency to take a hard time and create flexibility and meet their needs. And that's really a testament to the people involved in it and your commitment to it. So I want to thank you and those people.
So are you saying that there's a direct correlation? The number of students leaving that cyber charter school program are coming into our ECAD Academy?
We are getting students back from that as well. We see a lot of students come in and, just on their way to cyber school, not happy with what they're receiving and realizing that they need something a little more structured. So sometimes they're coming in as a hybrid student, where they're taking some online courses or no online courses when they come back. But that flexibility of being able to bring up work in the more schools helps us as well. We do have some come back that way. Our goal and plan with that was to realize some students would not come back and that they'd go to that comfort level with their school that they're involved with. But our goal is to make sure we won't be losing students. And if students graduated, that they weren't replaced by other students who are going to cyber charter, that we're able to meet their needs. And so our hope is that number continues to drop over time in terms of those students that are in whole out of district.
Any other questions for Dr. Brenner? Thank you. On your agenda next week will be a resolution to approve an overnight trip to Virginia, Maryland for Tim Sheridan, Ben Murray, and a wildcat marching band and chamber choir for performances in the International Music Festival Parade Nations and the Ron Fairlough Church Choir. Brew. Thank you. Okay, so that will be on your agenda for next week. Also, on your agenda will be a resolution to approve contracted services for the 2012-2013 school year at Presley Ridge, Tresit, the Transition Works Program, New Story, and the St. Vincent College Prevention Projects. Ms. Gillian Malloy is here this evening to give us a food service update on the new requirements for this year. Welcome, Ms. Gillian.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. As most of you are aware, the National School Lunch Program regulations were updated the first time this year in 15 years. It has been a challenge. The new meal requirements are aligning with the 2010 dietary guidelines, which emphasizes freshly processed vegetables as a center of your plate. And they also emphasize decreased portions of bread components and meats. So with saying that, if you can imagine not changing something for 15 years and then you're going to change, everything that I do has virtually changed. And the students can attest, they see that on their lunch tray as well. In your board packet, there's a flyer that I sent home into the pause print and PTO newsletters. And on the back of that flyer is a chart that I'd like to go through briefly to tell you about the different changes that occurred through the National School Lunch Program. Let me start off by saying, what is on this chart is what we have to offer the students. It's not what they have to take. Okay? So when you look at the new lunch meal patterns, on the left-hand side of the column are the two groups. In the middle, it says current requirements. That actually is what we did last year. And on the right-hand column, it is the new requirements, which is what we're doing this school year. So when we talk about fruits and vegetables, last year, fruits and vegetables, they were one group, okay? So there was one group, fruits and vegetables combined. The serving size was 3/4 of a cup. So I would give a half a cup of fruit, a quarter of a cup of vegetable. That would give me 3/4 of a cup. When you look at the new requirements, they are splitting the components apart. So there's a vegetable component and a fruit component. And with that comes some variations in how much I have to serve. This chart will not tell you per age group what I have to give them, but it gives you the range. So for vegetables, they have to be served 3/4 of a cup to one cup of vegetables per day. And then the fruit is a half of a cup to one cup per day. Another change with the fruits and vegetables is they have, the students have to have a fruit or vegetable on their tray at the point of sale in order to have a reimbursable meal. And what a reimbursable meal is, that $2 meal at the elementary level or the $2.30 meal at the secondary level. Okay? Moving along to vegetables as a component. Last year, there was no specific vegetable that had a serve. So I've been quite a bit with wheat. I choose corn, green beans, broccoli, things that they liked. This year, with the new requirements, there are new weekly requirements for different subgroups. Those subgroups are dark leafy vegetables. Examples, broccoli, romaine lettuce, those are two things of dark green. There's a red or a subgroup, which are things like sweet potatoes, tomatoes, red peppers. The beans and legumes, which are my favorite, chickpeas, kidney beans. There's a component for that. Starchy vegetables, which is everything else. It's corn, it's every form of potato. So mashed potato, a french fried potato, a smelly baked potato, that's all considered a starched vegetable. And then the other vegetable group is everything else. So iceberg lettuce, celery, cucumbers, those are all things considered others. So we went from giving limited types of vegetables weekly last year to a whole variety of the rainbow, per se, for vegetables. The meat meal alternative, last year, our daily minimal requirement was 1.5 ounces to 2 ounces. We always had a minimum for protein, okay? This year, we have a minimum and a maximum, and again, it goes by the age grade group. Again, on here, it gives you an estimate. For grades K through 5, you have to give minimally 1 ounce. Does anybody know what 1 ounce of protein is? A cheese stick. String cheese, that's 1 ounce, just so that you know what it is. Grades 6 through 8, again, 1 ounce minimum. And grades 9 through 12 is 2 ounces minimum. Then you see in the parentheses what I have to offer weekly. So weekly, K through 5 is 8 to 10 equivalents of meat. 6 through 8 is 9 through 10 ounces. And 9 through 12 is 10 and 12 ounces weekly. So some of the feedback I was getting from the kids is, oh, I can tell the change in the hamburger. Well, that's because I would get a 3 ounce hamburger because I would meet my minimum. There was no maximum. But now that I have weekly maximums, I have to do another 2 because if you have 2 ounces of protein times 5 days a week, that's your 10 ounces. Okay? Moving on to grains, last year, we had to offer 8 servings a week. And servings were easy. They were what we knew. A top of a hamburger bun, that was a serving. So an entire bun, the top of the bun, that would be 2 servings. So it was easy. This year, we have to do a calculation for an equivalent ounce weight of the bread. So with the grains, again, you see it mimics what we give for meat. 1 ounce minimum, K through 8, and 9 through 12 is 2 ounces minimum. And then you see the weekly ranges for how much bread you're allowed to take. Okay? Whole grains, this year, half of the offerings that we offer in the school cafeteria have to be whole grain rich. We've done that. That's progressive. We were there. We're probably about 75% whole grains. Next year, everything we offer has to be whole grain rich. Okay? The products that I purchase, we do the brown whole grain, but the majority of them are the white whole grain. So all the hamburger buns, hot dog buns are whole grain white. We do still bake some dinner rolls that are with whole grain flour. And then milk, milk has always been 1 cup. It stayed 1 cup, but the fat content changed. In the past, we were able to provide pretty much any variety of milk, whole, 2%, 1% skim. This year, it's only 1% and skim flavor. Okay? So those are all of the basic changes that happen. The biggest thing is the fruits and vegetables because the students have to have a fruit or vegetable on their tray this year. There are many more varieties available this year. And with the meats and the breads, the biggest thing there is you always have a minimum. You never have a maximum. So I can give them minimum, and I always have had meals last year to give the students a little bit more. Now there's not that push anymore to get a little bit extra. When it comes to desserts, the desserts cannot be grain-based because then that would be considered a grain. And if you want an entire bun to eat your hamburger, you can't have a whole grain cookie. So we can put things on the menu such as sorbet, sherbards, pudding, things like that that will give extra calories but not take up those food components. So it's been quite a challenge. I do want to say that any change does come from challenge. And the first 8 days of school was quite challenging. I'm sure most of you have heard the Plum Initiative. Students encouraged other students to pack their lunch because they were not happy with the new regulations, what they were being offered. So I've seen that affect at our lunch cafeteria. I compared my meal served last year at this time to this time now, and I'm down about 300 meals. That's huge. But I'm being proactive. I have some things on my sleeve to get the kids back into the cafeteria. I have email fillers out to the student council at the junior high and senior high to get them more involved in educating and helping me plan meals, to get them more on board. I'm on the PTO agendas to get the parents more excited about the healthy foods that are being offered. So I'm going to do some promotions to get the kids in, make it a little bit more fun. But it has been very, very challenging. So in a nutshell, these regulations were great. I was super excited about them. You know, I'm all for a healthy lifestyle. But when I see the kids suffering, I see, when I go talking in cafeteria and they say to me, I'm hungry, that concerns me. That concerns me a lot. We have a meeting with our state director next Friday. So that will entail about 150 food service directors with our one lonely state director. So she's going to hear our struggles because this is a national, this is a national regulation. What we have to do in Pennsylvania is what is already in the noise, and everybody has to do. It's not states. So we're all having the same issues. I talked to some of my colleagues in the area. They too are having low lunch costs and, you know, some feedback from the parents and students. So we're all in this together. One of the biggest things is the juice. I don't know if you guys heard about the juice. We always gave 8 ounces of juice at lunch. Now the regulations say 4 ounces. So the serving size reduced to 4. But at the secondary level, if they would like to have 2, that would be fine. 2 would equal 1. But the little kids, they only have a fruit or a juice as a fruit component. So that's been a real struggle trying to educate because we're trying to promote the positive message. And probably know they can't have that, so I think you're going against the norm. So it's been a challenge. But, you know, I'm hoping that, it's the first 2 weeks, my numbers are typically low the first 2 weeks. So I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks, and I'm getting in touch with whoever that needs will pick up.
Yes. Does anybody deal with anything as extension as calories?
Oh, yes. That was a whole nother document that I left out because the calories, in addition to planning the menu, then you run the menu through the nutrition analysis. And with the nutrition analysis, A, we couldn't get them updated this year because the state is formulating a statewide analysis that we're going to have to use. So that's not going to be available till October. The second thing is, in the past, calories were always a minimum amount of calories, minimum amount of fat. This year, there's min and maxes. So we have a maximum amount of calories. And the difference between the minimum and the maximum is 100 calories. So that's a whole apple.
The reason I asked that was that meals on wheels, lunches are planned by the hospital according to calories.
Right.
And they're trying hard to give the recipients better tasting, different things. But it's still the idea that we don't want them to be hungry when they finish eating their major meal of the day, which is their hot lunch. And I imagine that the students are having the same thing. It's like all our kids were put on a diet and nobody asked them.
Some things didn't really change. The things that the kids like to eat, like the hamburgers and chicken, they did reduce in size a little bit. The thought process is, you know, you put more fruits and vegetables out, the students will take it, they're higher in fiber, it will keep them fuller. Honestly, the students have been great taking those fruits and vegetables on their tray. I did a plate waste study, and it's probably about 50/50. 50% of them are eating them, 50% is going into the garbage. But if they would take everything that's a component and eat it, that's the key, then you would be full. But what I'm finding is, you know, students already have a food preferences once they hit the high school. So it's really hard to change those preferences. We can offer everything. We can offer everything, but it's what they want and what they're going to take. I thought of something when you were talking about that. Any more questions? Yeah?
I've been receiving a lot of complaints on parents and, of course, kids, elementary age kids. And I'm going to refer it to the public that that's not the school district that's causing it. Thank your federal government, this is the problem of reaching federal government.
Absolutely. And I am truly working with students to make it more appealing for them. It's just really hard because we handle ties with, with the federal regulations that we do have to uphold. Another concern I had too was the, the cost of meals. I do want to reinforce the fact that I have to raise lunch prices every year based on the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act. And if our lunch prices are not up to that $2.51, it needs to be increased every year by 2% plus the annual inflation index, which this year it was 4.18. So that is mandated by law.
Something in the street. You get a hamburger, it's only going to be 2 ounces, but you can only get half a bun.
No, you get the whole bun, but if you want it half of the bun, you can have half a bun and a cookie.
Sounds like a little bullshit. Not you!
It's a diet, and that, that's exactly what it is. For, for those of us who have ever been on a diet, that's...
And honestly, it's showing the students what portion size, you know, what it is.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, when we turn on the TV and we go off to restaurants, we're not seeing what real portion sizes are. And in the cafeteria, you're seeing what it is. The 2 ounce hamburger that we serve is similar to like the dollar menu at McDonald's, that $1 hamburger, that's what it looks like, basically.
Do you think that's...
I don't think they took that as a standard.
There's one not so proud of that kid.
I do that. That's my, that's my threshold, threshold, excuse me. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you get any from the public or personal questions, I'd be happy to go over this to my office.
We still have an ale card, maybe they can buy additional items.
Or additional items.
Or additional, yes.
You know, Gillian was here last spring, I know Cheryl is information call you, so I, I know it's not to your surprise. But when she was relaying to all of us at our last meeting about the concerns that she was having from parents, and I assumed that some of you were getting phone calls and questions. I thought it might be a good idea for her to explain to you again, so that the public would also hear that all of this is mandated, it's not unique to greater retrograde. And I applaud Gillian for all the efforts to try to get as much, whatever all of those things are that you just described, on the plate and something that the children are interested in eating, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going to Dr. Saltis to tell us about the National Association of Educational Progress.
The National Assessment of Educational Progress Organization Head is the NADP, as we've heard. We have been randomly selected again for our 8th grade, I know, it's like a random selection. How can the 8th graders be selected again? Now, I think we have, we did this 2 years ago. Our 8th grade is recently selected for the assessment in February. I bring this to the board's attention, because typically, we get these letters and we put them out with the annual letters that go home to every parent. However, the letter came after those annual letters were prepared and sent out for publishing, publication. So this is my formal notice to the public, the 8th grade in February. The date of the assessment is February 27, 2013. Our 8th graders will participate in the NADP.
So we live on the class.
Right. It's not like the 8th graders can take a lot of tests, as it is. They take the writing assessment, they take the science assessment, the reading, and the mathematics. And then, again, they will have the...
I love the names, this is progress.
And some students will take the T-Sign test.
Oh, yes, some, some students, if they complete number 1, will be taking T-Sign.
Thank you for the information, Dr. Saltis. The next curriculum meeting is next Tuesday before the regular board meeting at 5:15, and then the Center for Student Creativity, and of course, you are welcome to attend. That is my report, and I'll turn it over to finance, Mrs. Elder.
Thank you. You will find on your agenda next week, the Treasurers' Report and payment of bills as usual, and the gifts, grants, and donations. The Fraternal Order of Eagles has made a gift of $300 to the autistic support classroom. And United Way has made it, or given back, I think is more the appropriate way to put it. $2,500 for the 2012-13 transition. You will find at your places a copy of the budget, which is a labor of love from Dan Watson. Really, before I was on the school board, I thought the people who read budgets were totally nerdy, and I would never be one of them. And now, I just, I really enjoy reading these things. There's a lot of stuff in here that I am glad to know. Demographics, et cetera, et cetera. But the point that was made at our finance committee meeting is that everything that you find in here, or that anybody who wants to look at our budget online will find, are numbers generated by Mr. Watson. And there are school district numbers, and there, there are numbers that have been audited, that will be audited, et cetera. And then, there are some other numbers. If you look in your finance committee minutes, there's a millage, we've talked about a millage fund survey in Westmoreland County, and also a cost per pupil survey. And those are not in this budget book, because those are solely our numbers. But they're interesting, and I doubt Dan, who gave us next week here, a copy of the charts he gave us at the finance committee. To see the cost per pupil and millage is, is interesting, because we're always being compared to each other as though we're all the same, and we're not. And we don't operate with the same amount of money per student, or the same amount of money from a household. So those things, I think, are interesting to have. Next finance committee meeting will be the first Wednesday in October, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Elder. Property and Supplies' Cozart on with us this evening. We welcome Mr. Panfasic to give us a project update on the new construction.
Luckily, there's, there's not a lot to, to the report this month, because everything is still on schedule, still moving forward. We are still scheduled to put the athletic complex out to bid in October. We received the variance that we have requested from the zoning hearing board, we received conditional approval from the planning commission. And we will be going in front of the commissioners this Thursday, the 13th, to get their approval. The, the junior high project is on schedule 2 and progressing, and it is scheduled to go out to bid in December of this year. Everything is moving right along with both of those projects. There are 2, 2 additional computer animation portions that were originally scheduled to be completed by now, but they are running a little bit behind. And I am told that they will be completed by mid-September, in time for meetings that are required to be presented at. So although they're in May, they, they seem like they will meet the timeline that is needed for those. One of the, the things that is, is out there, we've, I've set up requests for proposals from independent testing companies, because that's another piece of this, this construction process that will, will happen. When we get you under construction, you, you want somebody that works for the district that is testing the soil infection, the concrete slump, all those types of things. From our experience, it'd be much better results if that testing person is working for the district, not working for the contractor. So we've sent out proposals for that. We will be bringing those proposals to the board next month for their review. We started to equip the workgroup use, and we have for board action this month, if, if we find a suitable person for that position. That would be required for board action this month, we need to hire the work. Are there any questions on the project supply? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item B, item number 4 in your packet, you'll find the Property and Supply Committee meeting in a minute. And the next meeting of the Property and Supply Committee will be October the 4th at 3:30 at Central Administration. And on your agenda for next week will be resolutions to approve the repair paving of the administration, administration building parking lot and the telephone system at the junior high. And we have a resolution number 58, which is a revised bid for winter sports equipment and supplies, and I will move for adoption of resolution number 58.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number 58. Any questions or comments?
Have the revisions gone up or down? I was going to ask if she wasn't, if you could have...
Sure, absolutely. The revisions have gone down. The, the, the report that was, the work group in the month of August, grand total was $23,267. Low bid amounts have not changed, just the quantities. Since that time, we've gone back through again and revised quantities and reduced the quantities of the bid items. So they've decreased by $9,064.
Questions, comments on that? Please comment. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number 58. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. And on your agenda next week will be a copy, copy of request for proposal.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Our lease for the Bagby Elementary copy and the Mountain Dew Elementary copy has expired, so we did request. So we've received 4 proposals, own process of reviewing those, and talking to each of the vendors, and asking them to, you know, give further consideration for the proposal. So we'll have a recommendation next week to get this copy replaced.
Thank you. And also, there will be, on your agenda will be provision to advertise for maintenance plow truck. Comment on that one?
We, we're definitely about to replace some very old plow equipment, so we're looking to advertise. Look at the options, I view versus you, except we're looking for options. We'll have a recommendation next week.
For next, please. Okay, so that will be on agenda, I mean.
Well, yeah, now we won't, we will have, we will have, we're asking for permission so that we can explore the options.
I understand. Any other, anything else to come up under property and supply? Moving along, Student Activities and Recreation, Dr. Lockman.
On your packet, item 5, as the dates, including this Thursday's girls soccer, and then this Friday's football game, and also the cheerleaders, we recognize there, but it's not on the sheet. And a big call.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Lockman. Community Relations, Dr. Zort.
First of all, the events, the third community park commissioner. How long is it going to be for the third community?
Well, Unity Township officially doesn't pull out until it's almost 2 years from the end of this year, so...
Westmoreland Elementary Unit. On your agenda for next week will be a resolution to authorize joint participation in a joint purchasing consortium, I'm sorry. A representative, to authorize a representative for the joint purchasing consortium and an alternate, and the representative would be Mr. Watson, and the alternate would be Honey Lasure. And that will be on your agenda for approval for next week. And then, permission to advertise jointly as a member of the WIU Joint Purchasing Board for 2013, 2014 will also be an agenda item. And the summary of the IU minutes held on August the 7th are item number 7 in your packet. And then, ends that report. Okay, we have the EWC TC Joint Operating Committee, the summary of the JOC actions from the meeting on 8/22/12, is item number 8 in your packet. Anything here that needs comment on, or other two representatives? Mrs. Elder, another sort of call, or anything? No? Okay, thank you. Board Policy, PSV Liaison, Mrs. Elder.
I'm going for adoption of resolution number 59, and then I'll explain it after it's seconded.
Okay. Do I hear a second of the resolution? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, then we adopt resolution number 59, and I'll give it up to comments, questions.
There are only 4 very minor changes. They are in policy number 305, 314.1, number 324, and number 335. And these are all really minor. They're basically just editing. And I, I will ask you to go on page and adopt them for first reading tonight. And if any of you is concerned about them, I have them available here, or I could tell you about them on the phone if you want to know. But we'll do first reading tonight and second reading next week. So we're sort of compressing the time period, but really, these are just very, very minor changes.
Any questions for Mrs. Elder? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we adopt resolution number 59 this evening, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Transportation, Dr. Mafa.
Yes, thank you. It was another security transportation meeting held on September the 5th, and the minutes of that meeting are in your packet, item 9. And we will continue our discussions on September the 26th at the senior high school conference, remember, we will...
Thank you, Dr. Mafa. Technology, Mr. Palmer.
And maybe where we have our community this evening at 6 o'clock, if we can figure out a response, and we'll just bring us up to speed, then your meeting minutes will be next week's packet.
And there'll be more detail in the notes, I'll just give the highlights. I informed the committee that we completed the installation of smart boards for K-3 in our elementary classrooms, so now we have a smart board installed in all of our elementary classrooms. And as was with 460 data last year, it seems to be very, very popular and a big hit for the teachers to be able to use with the students in their instruction. And our professional help this year, so we can revolve around that as well. We also completed the upgrade of our district wireless, so all buildings are completed with that, and that did include an upgrade to the administration building. Part of that was done, just kind of worked us up to speed with where we should be in terms of equipment, but also to open up access for BYOD initiative that we took on at the senior high this year. So we did begin our new senior high program with our incoming stock more, and which we incorporated a BYOD option and a K-1 option. So there were a lot of big changes that came with that program. It's still early on in the year, and I feel like we're still working through some issues with that, so we'll probably have more to come along. that, so we'll probably have more to come on that. Ecat Academy, just an update on enrollment, they're beginning the, the overall recap for years past. This year, we have a total of fourteen full-time students enrolled at our secondary level, forty-three part-time students at our secondary level, and we've also opened up our enrollment at the elementary level this year. And currently, we have one student that we were actually able to get back from a separate charter school, back into our system. So that was a great success for us.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Okay. I'm going to serve.
Superintendent's recommendation, Mrs. Swax.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number sixty, which is the resignations listed in your agenda.
Go ahead.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number sixty, the resignations. Any questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor, then please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number sixty-one, which is the approval of the list of substitute teachers.
I'll move for adoption of that resolution later second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number sixty-one. Any questions or comments on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number sixty-two, which is the approval of the AmeriFor tutors for two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, which begin on September seventeenth, as well as resolution number sixty-three, which is the approval of the support personnel that are listed there. Most of them are substitutes in the various areas in our district and they are always of great need. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolutions number sixty-two and sixty-three. Any questions or discussion on those motions, on those resolutions? All those in favor, then please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? That passes also unanimously. And next week, we will have an agenda item to approve supplemental positions, assignments for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year and other, other business. There really isn't any other agenda items, but since it's September, it's the first meeting of the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. I'd like to say that the opening of school, I believe, went very smoothly and that is thanking all of the staff, I believe the teachers, the characters, the classroom assistants, administrators. Really, you know, when you bring forty-two hundred students in on the first day, obviously you worry about getting them here and getting them home, which was done in an excellent manner by our certification department, but while they're here as well. And even though this boy gave a report about food service and we know how important lunch is during school day for students, we really did have a smooth start and that's a thank, thank you to everyone as well as the parents and the community, so good job. Thank you. Any other business to come in with the board's seat? There are none, then we are adjourned. Thank you for your time and we'll see you next week.